Committee Council and Budget Committee work session this evening. This being March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we're into the second day of spring. And it is truly a spring day today. That's maybe where everybody is out just having a good time. But welcome those that are here. Uh, I call the joint meeting uh, uh, to order. And um, we've got two items that we're going to be going over this evening. Uh, the first one is going to be our wastewater rate discussion. And Deb, it's good to see you on the line again. But what I'm going to do is I'll call on Leland Kest- Kester to our wastewater service manager to induce, to introduce the topic and to introduce Deb to the team. So Leland, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this evening, um, we had reached out to Deb Gilardia and Associates to review our rates for the wastewater system. Um, it had been two years back in two thousand and twenty, I believe, was the last review that was done. And it was determined that we would do two point five percent increases moving forward. But then that lovely COVID hit us and we decided that it wasn't right with the situation and uh, pain that businesses and residents were already feeling. So we froze rates for the last two years. And now we called Deb in to do another review and just make sure that we hadn't set ourselves in a hole. And with that, I think I will turn it over to Deb for her PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, great. Thanks, Leland. Let me see. Um, I'll go ahead and share my screen, which has a PowerPoint presentation. I can get to that. Sorry, we have a double header tonight with two topics. And so my, I think I have too many screens open at the moment. Let me try to get to that. My apologies for the delay. All right, I can just go into. There it is. Okay. All right, can you um, see my title slide there?
Yes, Deb.
Great. All right, as Leland said, this is our biennial wastewater rate review. And um, just as a little background, the city did a comprehensive rate structure or equity study uh, back in two thousand and fifteen. And as a result of that study, uh, there were some changes to uh, the rate structure, some pretty significant changes to the rate structure. And because they were so significant, the uh, decision was to phase in the implementation of that. That phase in completed in two thousand and nineteen. So since then, the review has been to look at the revenue adequacy and um, any rate adjustments to be applied across the board until uh, the next uh, rate equity study. And when we did this study a couple of years ago, recommended, you know, since the transitioning had just been completed, that uh, and there's another master plan on the horizon, best to wait uh, to do the next equity review until that is completed, that master plan. So the, the city's done an excellent job of managing the finances of the utility through incremental, uh, in most cases, less than inflationary increases yearly. Uh, the exception was in nineteen twenty, when the franchise fee was implemented. Then that was added to the rate increase. So instead of two point eight percent, it was seven point eight percent to recover fully those costs. As Leland mentioned, um, the uh, there hasn't been a rate increase since two thousand and twenty. We had recommended in the prior study, a two point five percent increase in twenty fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, but that was deferred. Just to provide some comparison with national trends, this bar chart shows water and wastewater rates. The wastewater rates are in the orange as a percent per annual, average annual percent increases relative to the gray bars, which are the uh, consumer price index. Generally, we see you have seen utility rates going up at double the rate of inflation and, and more than that in some years. And um, with uh, inflation in the, in the last couple cycles of this survey, being in the four to five percent range, um, you know, the rate increases generally have outpaced those as well. This is not the case in McMinnville. This is the case nationally as most utilities are not recovering sufficient revenue through their current rates to fund capital improvements as our systems age and need upgrading. As part of our process, as we've done in prior updates, that's basically three steps. The first is to identify the financial needs of the system. So project out the capital improvement plan, operation, maintenance costs, and uh, contingencies and capital reserves. Evaluate what funding sources are available. We project revenue from existing rates based on customer growth and water consumption. We did see a uptick in residential and multifamily water consumption during the pandemic as people were at home more. Um, other fees and charges represent uh, systems development charges from growth and some other minor fees and charges, but the, the rates are the primary funding source. So when we look at how the uh, rate forecast compares to the needs, then we uh, recommend the series of annual revenue adjustments to keep pace with those needs. And looking at the, the findings from this uh, this year's update. So there are always competing pressures on the rates and some good news, some bad news. Um, the downward pressure has come from a positive factor has been the steady customer growth and consumption. Leveraging your existing reserves, you had um, the other thing the city's been very prudent about is making sure there are capital reserves to enable continued cash funding of capital improvements and to be able to address short-term spikes in um, capital costs when you're facing a large improvement. There were some short-term O and M reductions as a result of the pandemic also. There was some deferrals in additional staffing that had been planned in the, in the prior plan. Those are still anticipated, but just were pushed out a little bit. There was some savings also in capital improvements, uh, which is what we saw in other places as well. The, there was a pretty significant change in the capital improvement plan overall. There's still significant capital investment needed over the ten-year period. You know, tens of millions of dollars. Um, and uh, so, and, and some of the other, while it was positive uh, growth and, and consumption for residential customers, there was some reductions in industrial production. And then of course, uh, the no rate increases for two years. Inflation continues to be a concern for utilities and um, residents and businesses alike. And that will continue to impact the, the costs. We've increased the uh, assumed inflation factors as part of this plan. And as council continues in its second part of the discussion tonight about other funding for um, uh, general city services, if there's an increase in the, in the franchise fee, then need to make a decision how um, to handle that as part of the rate update. This chart just shows you uh, the annual expenses projected for the capital improvements in the blue bars relative then to the, the green line is the reserves. So when you have an, a, an increase in the um, in the blue line, you see a decrease in the reserves because the red bar represents the amount of annual revenue that's coming in to fund capital improvements, which in many years of the plan is more than sufficient. But in years where you're doing a major improvement, like in which forecast in two thousand and twenty, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five period, then you're going to need to draw down reserves. And so we need to evaluate the rate increases to benefit from the use of that, those reserves, but not to completely draw down reserves such that when you get to the end of the plan, you've used it all up and then there are additional uh, large improvements on the horizon. And we've have put in some placeholder out at the very end of the plan, projects to be identified, perhaps in the master plan, that will need to be refined in a couple of years after that's completed. The uh, on the operating side or putting all the revenue requirements together, uh, the two and a half percent rate increase is uh, recommended beginning in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four um, to meet the increased costs associated with operation and maintenance, reflecting both uh, inflationary increases as well as some additional staffing that's um, phased in. You can see in the orange bars that uh, the amount of, that's the amount of capital transfers that is anticipated to balance how much we're planning to draw down from reserves. So the, the two and a half percent rate increase basically would be the fitting, that line fits with uh, these projected costs and maintains the uh, needed minimum balance or contingency in the operating fund. In comparison again to national trends, um, the, the dark blue bar. So as we talked about, no rate increases in McMinnville between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three, whereas many other utilities are continuing to have two to four percent increases on average. And those are projected to continue to increase of three and a half to four percent. I'll note that this survey was done before the, uh, we started seeing inflation at the levels we are now. And I know that a number of other utilities that I work with have had to increase their rate projections uh, on account of rising uh, capital costs. The, this table just shows you the wastewater rates. They are comprised of a customer charge that's flat amount per month and a volume charge uh, that varies by customer class. And that, and for industrial customers, based on the strength of the wastewater discharged. No changes in between two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. The increases, the uh, two and a half percent would result in about a dollar fifty increase for a typical customer bill um, beginning July uh, first of two thousand and twenty-three. Just uh, as you uh, think about the, the franchise fee, um, what's one things that's been discussed is potentially increasing the wastewater franchise fee by one percent. This would uh, result, a one percent increase um, would be about sixty cents on a typical residential bill if it, if you were to uh, adopt, um, that changed the policy to have that be six percent. And if you were to increase the rates by one percent to recover that as you did in two thousand and twenty for the original franchise fee implementation, that could be phased in. If you don't increase the rates for that, um, then it is estimated that, you know, obviously over time, that would have an impact on the capital reserves that we're projecting. And over the course of this plan, it's estimated to be um, over a million dollars, about one point three million. So it's really important as you continue to um, manage the wastewater utility to keep in mind the three things that the city has done very well in the past years that has kept you um, that has allowed you to not have rate increases for a few years and also to stay below uh, the rate increases that many others are experiencing. Uh, those moderate annual adjustments have helped to minimize the rate spikes. You also are within the range of revenues from fixed charges that are recommended uh, at the current industry standard. I will say you're on the lower end, so it's about thirty percent of the revenue right now comes from the fixed charges. And um, because most of the, the charge or most of the costs of the system are fixed in the short term. And so when uh, you see a reduction in consumption, that doesn't uh, translate into a reduction in cost. And uh, so, but you are within the range of in revenue recovery from fixed charges that keeps the rates and the revenue stable. And then of course, the reserves are, I can't stress enough how important and you could see in that capital improvement plan graph, how you're able to continue to moderate the rates because you can draw from reserves that you've been building up over many, many years. So just to uh, summarize recommendations and summary of no rate increase through fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the first increase would be that's recommended is July one of two thousand and twenty-three, which is uh, fiscal year twenty-four. And uh, but that's reduced from uh, two plans ago, which had two point eight percent uh, projection. Continue to review the costs and revenues every couple of years and uh, revise the strategy as needed to meet financial performance goals. And one of those might be some change in the franchise fee. And uh, for the rate structure, that should be uh, looked at again soon, likely after the completion of the next uh, master plan coming up in the next couple of years. With that, I'll happy to take questions.
And let's open it up to council for questions for Deb and this presentation. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. I'll uh, try to be quick. Thanks for the presentation and good, interesting data. And I don't know if this is a Deb question or a Leland question. Leland, also good to see you. Um, the, all this makes sense, totally on board. Just question, I didn't see in the packet or hear in the presentation, wh- uh, what if any impact the, the, the loss, even though they are coming back of the creamery as a large rate payer or is that, and please forgive my ignorance, if that's not this revenue stream or is, is, doesn't have an impact, then maybe that's the answer. But what if any, uh, or how was that taken into account, the loss of the creamery in their downtime?
You're absolutely correct that that is a factor that we considered. It, it does impact this revenue stream. We modified, uh, well, we have actual data for um, you know, year-to-date kind of thing. So we know what the impact has been. It's a question of how quickly they ramp back up. And I think we've been pretty conservative with respect to the assumptions about when they would be back to full operations. And um, I don't know, so it's, short answer is it's in the plan, uh, both the uh, the downtime and some phased increase. Um, so we factored that in.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Yeah, so is, that, yeah. Uh, this recommendation includes that, them in that calculus. And I know they were by and large the biggest user, so, and whether or not that revenue matches the offset of not having to deal with their discharge on a monthly basis. I imagine that is some amount of less work at, at a certain clip or amount of burden on the system. Um, but yeah, if that's in there, then, then great. That was the biggest sort of elephant in the room, as it were, um, in that calculus, but, but uh, thanks.
Other questions? Not seeing any hands raised. Deb is, as, as normal, uh, your analysis is easy to understand. And this is really a, a pleasant uh, ability that we have when it comes to uh, our wastewater and uh, and uh, giving the ability to hold off for another fiscal year in that two and a half percent increase. So um, again, I'll just ask one more time, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, we will now move into the city services fee continued discussion. And we've been on this for a number of months. And so I'll call on our uh, uh, finance director, uh, Jennifer, to introduce the topic and get us back to the table talking about uh, city services fees. Jennifer?
Yeah, great. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see so many folks on the phone here or on our Zoom. Um, so I will share my screen. See. And is um, the deck coming up? Folks seeing it?
It is.
Cool. So um, so as, as Mayor Hill noted, um, this is a continuation of the discussion that um, we've been having, well, probably for the last six, seven months in depth and specifically on the prior presentation a month ago, February sixteenth. So um, the, you'll be hearing from, from me and um, I'll ask Jeff to weigh in from time to time as well as from Deb. And we're gonna, we're gonna flip the presentation a little bit. And this time, we're gonna start with um, kind of from the big picture, how much um, how much new revenue are folks interested in trying to generate to support um, city services? And also to talk a little bit about options in terms of the mix. And then certainly one of the major components and pieces to being able to develop additional funding for um, for all of the various city services that the city um, provides. The residents and businesses in the area will focus in again on the city services charge. Um, my intent is to be as, as brief as we can here with the presentation. Um, you all have had the materials for um, for a little while. Apologies on not getting it out as early as we typically do. There was just a lot to incorporate, but we want to leave time for you all to, to get into the discussion and ask any questions or follow-up. But we really, um, for the budget process, we really need to get a sense from council as to what the expectations are for any new resources we should be taking into consideration. So, let's see, there's anything I missed. Jeff, is there anything you wanna um, weigh in on kind of big picture before we get into it?
No, but thank you, Jennifer. Nice job setting up the conversation.
Okay, super. So I'm going to start out with a slide that you all, that may be familiar um, to you all now. Um, and I added this to the deck. So Claudia, I'll get you a new copy that has this one additional slide. So in terms of where we're at with budgeting, um, as I'm sure it's not surprising, um, we are kind of without new resources. We are in, we remain in this range for next year that we would be um, our current revenues against our current expenses are exceeded by over two million dollars. And we've been talking about a persistent two million dollar gap, which, you know, goes back over a decade. But we are looking at um, something that's higher than that as the more, the more current years might indicate. Let's see, so this, this slide here was included. And so the intent is not to say um, on the low end, we staff um, recommends two point eight million versus six point eight million. This is just to give you a sense of kind of where, where the larger source, potential sources of new resources that we can bring to the city to support police, to support fire and our parks and all the different services, the library, municipal court, just all of the long-term planning that we've been talking about. We had the great um, discussion on system development charges last week, all the work that goes into all of these different activities. Um, what are, what are our options that we can draw on to better support that work? And so literally, there is an, there is an infinite um, number of variations that you could get to, to put things together if you wanted to raise, say, four million dollars or five million dollars. But this, this gives you kind of just a snapshot of the range. And we also, um, as noted in the staff report, we wouldn't recommend a city services charge that would have a rate structure that would raise any less than two million dollars, simply because it's such a, a significant project. Um, to get this going, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to implement something that complicated um, to, to raise a million dollars, say, when there are other ways that you could do that. So. Um, so here's information. One of the um, one of the revenue sources that we've talked about um, a few times is payment in lieu of tax. And that's a percentage um, fee put on municipal electric companies um, on their, on their general revenue from that um, from that utility activity. And so um, our research scientist, um, Claudia Cisneros got in, in the weeds and looked at all of the different electrical um, municipal, municipal electrical utilities that there are in the state of Oregon and was able to reach all of them except for one to see what kind of rates they have on their payment in lieu of tax to, to just see if we were um, in the same ballpark. And the interesting thing is, we appear to be the only jurisdiction, the only municipal um, municipality that is charging a differentiated rate for different types of customers. Everyone, every other um, uh, municipal utility is charging the same rate. And you can see there's a range. Six is, you know, fairly average. There are a number that are higher. Um, and the city of Ashland is, you know, off the charts in terms of how they approach this. Um, so the next, the next few slides just give you a sense of what um, two million, three million, four, five and six million, what more or less um, it would do in terms of our service um, delivery ability? And then some, some varied scenarios of how you could get there. So two million dollars, as we saw from the slide before, um, that really, that equates to our um, the long-term persistent um, funding gap. But really, it wouldn't be enough to um, completely uh, address just a basic ongoing um, budget with nothing new in it. Um, and our ability to make progress on building up our reserve and certainly our ability to address deferred maintenance just wouldn't make any progress in a two million dollar range. But here are some options on that in terms of three. Um, again, that would, that would allow us to have, I believe, basically a steady state budget. Um, we probably would be able to make some incremental progress on building back the reserve as we've committed to in our reserve policy. But um, it, the likelihood that it would be able to make any progress on deferred maintenance or add um, any new services or make progress on moving base or below base core services up higher, um, three million dollars just isn't enough to stretch to any of that. So here again is kind of a list of different ranges of options that you would have to be able to get to three. Um, so, so four, I think would allow us to make some progress um, on either deferred maintenance and maybe some targeted core services um, improvements or um, moving to, you know, adding on new programming to. Or um moving to, you know, adding on new programming to um to move forward MacTown twenty thirty-two activities. But it, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be sufficient to do multiple additional things. So. Again, it's um, it's a little limited. And so, for example, um, in twenty nineteen, there was the um big facility study which spurred on um our work the last couple of years and uh with MAC PAC looking at um uh parks and rec facilities and the library, et cetera. So that study, there is an average annual investment of over three million dollars required just on the care and feeding, the upkeep of our current assets. So in that, so for, if we added four million, we couldn't keep a um, a steady state service delivery portfolio and make significant progress on that. So it's, it's unfortunate, um, but it's just, it's limited. Even though four million dollars sounds like so much money. Um, so five, again, just, you would be able to do a little bit more. Um, then we really are looking at needing to um to do that. The city services charge would have to be um towards the upper end of what um Deb's gonna be presenting. The details of a, a two, what two million dollars rate structure looks like versus three and a half. Um, and then s- six million was the largest number I kind of did a ballpark for. But um again, just to give context, back in January, when we talked about the core services. And there were price tags associated estimates with um how much additional resources would be required to to move different core service levels up higher. And I think one of the im- important um benchmarks was the, the top top twenty-five prioritized base and below base core services. If we wanted to move all of those up one service level, um, the estimate there was over three million dollars on its own. So, so that just, that gives you a context, but you know, raising six million, you really would have to go all in on practically everything, all of the options that um we're bringing before you in terms of the, the city services charge, um, really going um taking the payment in lieu of tax, not to twenty-five percent like um Ashland, but ten percent um would be required. Or we could look at a slightly lower payment in lieu of tax. But we would then need to increase wastewater's um franchise fee and start a water franchise fee. So it just, there are a lot of trade offs and things to consider. So um now we're at the portion of um moving into the city services charge details. Um, I don't know. Jeff, do you have any um thing you'd like to weigh in on in terms of the, this first portion of the discussion or the presentation?
No, thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, cool. Well, then we will hand it over to Deb and I see she's already unmuted and I will be um moving her slides, so.
Great. Okay. Next slide, please. So just to update you with where we are on this since we met last, um. You gave us some feedback on uh some preferred rate options at the last meeting. And so what we've been doing is refining those options and um doing a deeper dive into the customer bill impacts. We've also continued to do data verification and um uh looking at other aspects of the implementation plan. Okay, next slide. So the green uh options three and four seem to be of the most interest to council at the last meeting. And so we've really focused here on those two options. And those are the same rate structure. It's a residential and multi-unit customers would be charged based on the number of units. And non-residential of, that are single unit would be charged based on the meter size. The difference between options three and four is that is the percent of cost recovered from residential versus non-residential. Option four, uh, and when I say non-residential, that means commercial and industrial. Option four has a higher percent uh revenue recovery from uh non-residential, about thirty-one percent of the total. Uh, whereas uh option three recovers about twenty-seven percent from uh non-residential. Next slide, please. In addition to uh looking at further developing information related to customer bill impacts, we've modified the meter charge bases for scaling of the uh city services fee to use a three-quarter inch meter equivalency factor based on uh feedback from McMinnville Water and Light. That they are moving to a three-quarter inch uh standard for the water meters. And that's the assumption they use for their uh water rate structure. So to be consistent, um, we modify the, the, the rates that we presented at the last meeting. Were based on a, the five eighths by three quarter, and this is based on a three-quarter inch. What that does is it raises the lower uh fee and it decreases the upper fee. So you see uh less of a range in the, the uh fees by meter size. So you can see that under the two million dollar option for option three, that the single family residential fee is eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. And um still assuming uh a low income would pay less as well as uh multifamily residential based on occupancy, lower occupancy per unit. So they uh low income is assumed at fifty percent and multi-residential is at seventy-five percent of single family. And then you can see the range of rates for commercial and industrial range from the, the, the low end is assumed to be the same as a single family residential. So one equivalent dwelling unit. And then at the upper end for a six inch meter would be three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. Next slide, please. Under option four, the rates uh are significantly higher for commercial industrial as you can see in both the chart and the table to the side. And that is based on uh reallocating some of the costs, some of that two million to uh non-residential. It does decrease the rate for single family and multifamily uh to nine forty-one and seven dollars and six cents. Uh, but those uh commercial industrial rates would be in the twenty dollar range for the low end up to uh six hundred and sixty-two for the six inch meter. Next slide, please. This gives you then the comparisons of those two options uh with between the two revenue targets, so two million versus three and a half million. And um also shows the percent of revenue that's recovered from each class. And uh you can see that uh the, and, and I've also provided the small commercial bill and the large commercial bill under the different options. So again, in option three, the small commercial pays the same as single family. And um uh the large commercial is based on the six inch meter. So those rates range from eleven twenty-five to three seventy-five. If we go to a three and a half million, then the uh single family bill goes from eleven twenty-five to nineteen sixty-nine. And uh the large commercial about six hundred and fifty. And the um, the percentage of allocation by class is shown also on the table. Okay, next slide, please. Just looking at some typical customers, this uh table shows what those monthly bills would be under the different rate structure and revenue uh options. And you can see, uh, for example, for the multifamily, um, based on the number of units, a small complex of four units versus an eighty-eight unit um apartment complex, what those rates would be and uh small, medium, and large commercial um three-quarter inch meter, a two-inch meter, and a six-inch meter. Um, council had asked us to do a deeper dive into the full uh impacts for, uh, in particular for the general service or commercial industrial class. Because there is quite a range of bills and quite a range of customers. So McMinnville Water and Light was able to provide us with um a uh sample of about six hundred general service customers that where they are a wastewater account. And there was information on what is currently being billed for water, wastewater, and electric. Um, there's a, there's a number of other accounts that are actually wastewater customers, but they uh have a separate electric meter. And so we wanted to be consistent in the sample that we were evaluating to include only those customers where all three services, where there was information on all three services. So six hundred customers, good, large portion of the um, the customer class. And what you see here in this table is the average bill combined uh for each meter size. And uh not surprising, that generally increases with the size of the meter because you have a larger meter, because generally you're using more water, which also means you pay more for wastewater. Excuse me. That is not the case for the six inch meter. That was just one customer. And so um there are, there are other customers that have six inch, but we didn't have complete data. So um it's uh probably too small of a sample to represent the class as a whole. However, I included it because we did have that information. And you can see, oh, if you would go back just a second and just wanted to show that generally speaking, even though we're talking about, so the percentages show you, if you add the city service charge, what percent increase that means on the customer's average bill. And even though some of those um uh service charges for the high, large meter sizes are several hundred dollars um in the different options, as a percent of the total bill is relatively small, smaller than, for example, single family and the smaller meter sizes. Because it just represents, most of their bill is associated with the other utilities. Okay, next slide. The next few slides just give you a distribution. Um, we can look at averages and, you know, that doesn't tell you a lot about the outliers. And so uh I'm sure, you know, council wants to know what is the potential impact on the, on the full range of customers. For this sample, um, it's, this, the chart shows you the number of customers that would be within the percentage ranges uh shown in the blocks. So, and I've drawn a line uh at the ten percent increase. So eighty-three percent of the customers in this sample would have um uh less than uh ten percent increase in uh the rate, so i- in their total bill. And you can see there's a handful of customers uh that would have more significant increases. In some cases, uh thirty to forty percent. Okay, next slide. Option four, uh with the two million dollar, this is shifting, remember, shifting more of the cost recovery to the non-residential class. So therefore, there's fewer customers that would be in that ten percent and below category. Would still be over fifty percent. But now you see um uh several, you know, many more customers that are in the ten to twenty percent range. And even some, now we have a few that would be over fifty percent increase in the bill. Excellent. Uh, this is option three with the three and a half million uh revenue target. About the same percentage of customers that would be uh ten percent and below increase. And um then uh another, you know, the m- majority of the customers to twenty percent and below. But there would still be a number of handful of customers that would see those more significant increases. And of course, option four is the most um, has the most impact on non-residential because we're number one, increasing the revenue target to three and a half million. And this is the option that recovers the highest percentage from non-residential. So now you see only about twenty-nine percent of the customers that would see ten percent and below increases. And the majority of the customers would be over ten percent. And, and now we at the very upper end, instead of zero or five customers with over fifty percent, we've got about twenty-one. So it does, hopefully gives council a better uh understanding of um what it means when we say there's a six hundred dollar potentially uh bill for a uh six inch meter. Okay. Next slide. I'll turn it back to Jennifer.
Um, so in terms of details that we'd like to get guidance on so that we can um firm up uh what we're doing in terms of the implementation, because there are timing issues involved in how quickly still we can bring this on, which affects our um, our budget certainly for the upcoming year. Um, but would have less impact if we needed to delay um into FY twenty-four. Obviously, that would um, it would be there for a, a full twelve months, the city services charge. But anyhow, so, so we wanted to get um a sense from folks as to whether there are any exemptions that would be important um that the council would like us to see um included in the ultimate ordinance that would be brought before you later this year. Um, options are to um to exclude secondary meters, we could exclude the city. Um, right now, the city pays electric um charges, but not water or sewer. Um, and just if you, if folks wanted to get into um more detailed exemptions, just, you know, with the understanding that uh having um numerous exemption types just make the um, the implementation and the ongoing care and feeding of the program um a little more costly and difficult. Um, and then in terms of the low income program, we, in our models, have that valued at um fifty percent of what um the single family residents would be. But there are other options. Um, we could consider, you know, a small flat fee. We could consider um, you know, completely waiving the city service charge for folks who qualify for other low income um programs um that are, that are available to them. Then we're also wanting to let you know where we're at with implementation next step. So um we're continuing to work with McMinnville Water and Light, um, some of the data categories. Um, at this point, we may just have as much information as we're gonna have and will um and our estimates are, you know, as good as they're gonna be. And then we'll just see how it goes when we implement. Um, we also want to um to make sure that in the process, we validate that there are no um there, that no customers, residential or um general service um class folks would receive duplicate city services charges somehow, or that um anyone would be missed in um, in contributing to um this more sustainable revenues for the city services overall. Um, and then if we, um, I guess there were, are some details still to work out in terms of what would be the, the easiest way, the most effective way to program multi-residential um and non-residential um charges, identifying those accounts. And then in terms of council next steps and what you'll be seeing um happen over the next few months is um presuming we do want to um go ahead and implement the city services charge that will, um, an ordinance will be drafted to go into a lot of these details. Um, and we would need to pass that uh with ample time before we And we would need to pass that with ample time before we bring those dollars online. Then if, if you all are interested in making any updates to either payment in lieu of tax or the existing wastewater franchise fee, or if you'd like us to pursue looking at a water franchise fee, which would, which would also trigger us beginning to pay water, which I don't know if folks saw the detail, but our estimate is that it would be about $200,000 a year in water charges that the city would then become obligated to, to kick in to MAC Water and Light. So there might be one or more resolutions that would come before you. And then certainly for the FY 2022, 23 budget process, we really need to get a handle on this soon because we need to know how much new revenue to build into our budget estimates. And also have some reality check in terms of timing of these things. So that we can present a balanced budget to the budget committee with, you know, enough time for you all to review it and get into meaningful discussions about that later in May.
Jennifer, Kelly has her hand up.
Okay, yeah, and also I noticed earlier that council president Drabkin had also raised her hand and lowered it. So we can also circle back maybe with her, so.
Okay. Kelly?
Okay, my, my recollection was that Water and Light is projecting out six to nine months to implement this city's service fee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's quite a while, so we're not at just the immediate revenue, I take it.
No, it's, I mean, I guess our perspective is it's more important to do this right.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just looking at the timeline. Yeah. Per se. And, and then we also have probably in November coming up, our fire district coming up. So I guess my question is, you know, I'm very interested in increasing revenue. I, I am for it. I am also very concerned about increasing costs to the citizens in these high inflation times and getting buy-in. I, I'm just wondering if maybe it's better to kind of consider doing, you know, continue to work on this, but do the fire redistricting election ahead of this, just to kind of, I mean, people have been listening to this now for several years about fire redistricting. This is going to be a whole new program with the city fee. And considering the timelines as they're laying out currently, I just kind of wondering if, have we, have we thought about this first?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, we've thought about it and we understand the timelines. There just have been realities in terms of moving forward. I think some of the options that are ahead of you, the city services charge debt will take more lead time. There are other options that my understanding is we could implement quicker. Although if you wanted to look at a water franchise feed, I think that too has a longer term timeline if we want to consider that. So I don't know, in, in terms of timing with the special district election and that sort of thing, I'll defer that to, to Jeff or perhaps Fred.
So I have a, a partial response to that. And, and I know that I've got some other questions. I don't want to spend too much time on that. Before I answered that part of your question, Kelly, I just wanted to add some additional information with respect to how we hope to address equity concerns, particularly for low income residential customers. We're really, we're looking at a couple of different methodologies here, obviously. But there are multiple programs in town run by YCAP and St. Vincent de Paul where people are able to qualify for support for their utility bills. And while we don't know how many folks that is, that information hasn't been provided to us, we know that the information does go to Water and Light periodically. And our expectation is that rather than having someone go through another process to get some relief on the city services charge, if a customer qualified for either of these two programs that, that Water and Light is already working with, we would just automatically either eliminate or discount the city service charge for those folks. So it doesn't put any additional burden on the customer. They're already going through a process to qualify for some relief and we would just grant that relief as, as part of the system. With respect to your larger question, I, I do expect the discussion about timing is going to occur. I know at least a couple of other counselors have some, have some thoughts about that. And I just want to get out of the way and let you have that conversation. One of the realities though, is that we have this persistent deficit. And nobody was real happy with the budget that we saw for the current year, last year. And that's really why we started this conversation in July. With no new revenue at all, you're going to see a budget that has deeper and likely more permanent cuts than the one you saw for the current fiscal year. So with, with no revenue initiatives at all, we're sort of back to where we were last year and still dealing with this persistent deficit. So that's sort of the one area of caution.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. I don't think we should stop these talks. These should continue. I'm just saying that the way it's kind of coming out is that actually we probably could get to the fire district vote ahead of this, this other fee. And I just feel like it's going to be harder still, I'll just be honest with you.
So, so there's two things in play here, Kelly. One is that the, the fire district vote, you could get an affirmative vote in November. You're still 18 months from seeing any access to any new.
No, I appreciate that. And we, I guess we'd immediately go to the other.
That's two more budget cycles with no new revenue at all.
Yeah, but we could go for a much lower figure if we actually pass the fire districting. And we know that that was what we were going to go for.
Well, actually, I don't think that the data supports that because all, all the, all the, all the fire district does is, is relieve us of a fixed cost for services. It doesn't fix the differential between revenue growth and expense growth. So it gives us a little more capacity, but we still hit that cliff two or three years down the road. So there, there is, the, the, the move to a fire district does not address our structural imbalance between the growth curves for revenue and growth curves for expense.
Okay, but we can still make that decision with a lot more information, depending on the fire districting vote, I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Adam and after Adam, I've got Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. I don't know exactly what slide it was. It was one of your first slides that was kind of showing what 2 million and 3 million would look like in new revenue. And that's kind of following on Kelly's methodology. Where I'm at is, you know, you have the fire district, you have the city services, rising expenses, and then you have the MAC PAC and, and those are kind of the elephants in the room. And to get the taxpayer on board, I think if we're going to look at being successful in all three of those, we need to let the taxpayer take those a bite at a time and not expect them to eat a Thanksgiving dinner in one sitting. So, you know, to expand on that, the, the fire district, if that passes in November, granted, it does take 18 months to ramp up, does alleviate about three and a half million dollars on the, the general fund budget that we're currently expensing there. And so if we as a budget committee and council took the initiative to, you know, phase that taxing, tax back in over a three or five year period, you're going to get 1.15 or 700,000 a year as you're ramping that tax, levying it back on the taxpayer. And, you know, I think that's a more sustainable approach as far as being successful and, and getting all three of these things done. I think if we lead with an administrative action versus a vote of the taxpayer, I think you risk turning off the taxpayer to the other two, two things we have on the table being the fire district and, and the MAC PAC. Granted, MAC PAC is going to be a, a heavy lift as it is, and so is the fire district. I'm not saying it's a guarantee it's going to pass in November, but I would definitely say putting the city services fee on the taxpayer before we even get one initial vote on a fire district we've been working a number of years on is short sighted. And I'll rest the floor for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Chris and then Zach after Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I do have a quick question, and I don't know if this goes to Jennifer, if this goes to Jeff. But we're seeing a lot of development out on the north end of Baker Creek Road. And we're going to be seeing a ton of development coming in, excuse me, in our UGB expansion that we've done in that area. And I'm curious, what assumptions, as, as we're talking about the, the need for more revenue, what assumptions were put in play in the discussion that, for what revenue increases we're going to be experiencing as a function of this growth that's already coming our direction? And, and kind of with a backlay to that, in the last five to six years, we've seen 5 million increase in property tax revenue. So, and, and that's based off of what growth we've currently had, which really has been some, but it hasn't been a ton. So I'm curious to understand what those underlying assumptions were in this process.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, first of all, the $5 million of, of increased property tax revenue that you're talking about was the second round of the transportation bond. It didn't have anything to do with general fund resources. So that was a voter approved capital bond that was issued in two phases. The second phase was $5 million and was issued about three years ago. Secondly, with respect to the amount of growth and development that, that drives property taxes, we're not predicting any growth from our UGB for at least three to five years because those areas all have to be master planned and annexed. And folks have to go through land use and building processes to move those projects forward. So we're not likely to see any significant development in the UGB area for three to five years. What you've been seeing in, in and around Hill Road and Baker Creek Road with Baker Creek South, Baker Creek North and the Oak Ridge subdivision is, was what has, yeah, along with other development that's occurring in the community, what has had our property taxes grow between, you know, 3.8 and 4.2% a year for the last several years. We base, we, we have an assumption of 3% growth based on the, the tax limitation measures that are in place. And then new construction creates some sort of delta above that. But for us, that has been, you know, less than one and a half percent a year over the course of the last several years. So even though you're seeing a lot of development in those areas, it doesn't drive a huge number for the general fund because even that new construction values, it, it only generates again between, I think this year our property taxes grew by 3.8%. Was that right, Jennifer?
No, I, I was just pulling that. What I've, what I've got going now, my current estimate is that property taxes will, will be up by 4.6% over what we're estimated to bring in this year. So it, so that does capture some new development.
So essentially the, the difference between the 3% growth that happens as a result of the real market value calculations and the 4.6 is the new development or new construction. So 1.6% of our, of our property tax is attributed to new development in the current forecast. So we, we do look at those numbers every year.
So you're, if I, I'm going to repeat back what I heard, so I make sure I heard you correctly. Approximately a 4% increase in, in property tax growth is factored in as an assumption for what we can expect.
It varies from year to year, yeah.
I'm not caring about varying for year to year. I'm talking about in terms of this projection of, of us being in a hole, what projection was included in that revenue increase? Or, or what, what assumptions were made for revenue increase during that timeframe? Or were there any?
Well, yes, there were, and it varied from year to year. It wasn't, it's 4.6 this year. It wasn't 4.6 every year. It's, it was somewhere between 3.8 and 4.6% each year.
Okay.
Right, so, so the, the, the 4.6% increase over current for a proper, for property tax that's unrestricted dollars for the general fund. So this excludes all of the property tax that's collected either for urban renewal or property taxes for our debt service payments. So that, the incremental increase year over year is about $650,000. So it's, so it, it's meaningful, of course, but it's not, it's, it's not at the level that will allow us to maintain services at the same level. And certainly it doesn't stretch to dealing with deferred maintenance that we've put off for, for years and years, as well as any new programming or improving the below base or base services.
Yeah, I get all that. So I, I just wanted to understand what assumptions of increased revenue were, were part of this discussion because I haven't heard that. Just like I haven't heard what would be the actual effect if we were held to the current budget dollars, which I believe was also asked to us through the Chamber of Commerce to get that same question answered. And I've asked for it repeatedly and still have not gotten that answer of what, what does holding the line really translate in loss of services? And I'd still like to get that answer. The, the other thing I, I'd like to say is, and I'm, I'm not going to argue this in this conversation. I think maybe we could have a one-on-one and go through this and you can show me if I'm wrong. But when I looked up the numbers, I was seeing a $5 million increase yearly into property tax revenue that's occurred since you look at the 2016, 17 budget to this budget of, of 2023. That's not a one time, it's a yearly revenue increase. But we can have that conversation later. The last thing I'd like to say is I, I, I am really, really concerned. And I really appreciate Kelly bringing it up and Adam bringing it up. But I'm, I'm maybe in a different vein with Adam, but I'm, I'm concerned about the burden we're going to be putting on our residents as we increase. I mean, I see three different potential increases to their water and light bill. You know, we had, we had Tom Tankersley, who I consider a friend on here, putting his heart out there of his concerns of how that's going to play out. And, and in a time of, of inflation, in a time of, of, you know, really, it's been a lot of uncertainty for the last two years. I, I have deep concerns. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, everybody is, it's, it's not a surprise I'm against revenues. I've kind of made that clear. But this in particular is one that is really concerning to me on how it's going to play out to the vast majority of our residents. You know, we're in a city that has, we're lower, we're below average on median income per household. And, and here we're going to go after their water and light bill. I, I just have deep concerns and I think Adam's concerns, I, I would echo that if you're, if, if you're going to move forward with this, it's short sighted to do it now. I think it's going to harm us in any other future revenue endeavors you're trying to put forward. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go over to Zach and then we have Meredith after Zach.
Thank you. I will be brief to respect the last 20 minutes of the discussion. Sort of answering the questions in front of us and then, and then taking a second to acknowledge the conversation before. As was the last meeting, last meal, last meeting, about 6 million totaled in target for the revenue. Given the layout of, of paths in front of us in this, in this document, I'd, I'd like to see that as, as three, the, the increase to pilot on all accounts to 10% is my preferred method and create of institution of a waste, or sorry, a water franchise fee. I think leave the wastewater where it is. It seemed like those were the two choices inside of that. And then, and then the city service fee at the three, the three and a half million, I think was in that, in that. And using option three, seemed like the difference between option three and option four was a level of complexity that I wouldn't burden staff with at this time. So I'm lying more in option three or structure three. The, I think that's that. And then preferred charge element, that, that I got that there. And then billing exemptions and discount program. I, I, if possible, I mean, it's a sort of a wave the magic wand and bring me a unicorn. But as, as low if no cost at all to, to low income and needy. and needy people, the better for this program and how we get there, I think we were alluding to. And I know that's after watching the last MAC Water and Light Board meeting or commission meeting, their policy document about is in the protection, protecting their users and the data therein. I totally understand. We're trying to do what they're worried our thing isn't going to be able to do. And so we gotta come up with a way to get there at some point. Jermaine, to the discussion at hand, I think we should march forward with with the charge for staff to bring these ordinances to create these revenue streams back to us in the separate pieces that they need to be. While we can have the discussion of phasing and timing, my time horizon is is the successful construction and long-term operation of all of the facilities contained therein in the MAC PAC project. And and the decisions I'm making now are hopefully getting us to that point, right? It's, and I see the, I see the fire district as a successful component of that. I see these revenue streams and sustainable revenue streams as a part of that and adjusting them to manage the ongoing facilities, capital and and maintenance needs and operating costs. And so putting the tools in place in a way that makes sense to set us up for success. So, Adam, I'm super concerned and want to be cautious as we go forward with that. I don't live in a world in which we're guaranteed to pass, and so figuring that out. Similarly, I'd like to, as we move forward with the city service fee, past the the waste or the pilot and adjustments in franchise fees to cover the budget deficit, I see the city service fee as the rocket fuel to the rocket ship that is our services and our core services discussion and fueling how and what we do to that. I'd like to get further down the road on the discussion of how we roll out the first whatever million dollars we put towards that in the core services. I don't know, I haven't haven't fully understood how we're gonna have or finish that discussion on what are our priorities when we provide you with a dollar amount and land on the dollar amount? Is it 3 million? Is it 2 million? Is it 5 million of just city service fee money? What and how do we roll out the core services movement and levels of service movement? So if I could get some more information on that, that would let me finalize that decision a little bit better. And secondly, to to sort of a theme of, you know, we're talking about revenue, but the fear of overburdening. In my time on council and in all my involvement in this with cities, our community, I've continuously heard the requests and need for more and better services, for us to do more, for us to be faster, for us to be better. All the documents we have are really, we have a great city, and this is, this is what we need to do to offer that. If we don't, yet to hear a proposal for what actually and concretely we are not going to do. Instead of, instead of opposing this, you know, we have no, nothing in front of us that is actually taking a stand on what are we going to then cut to be a sustainably run city? So that's, that's my opinion and weighing in on the policy questions and the discussion at hand. Hope that helps. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Allison, or excuse me, Meredith, and then Allison after Meredith. Meredith?
Hi, okay, I'll try to be brief. I would prefer option three with a $3.5 million goal. And about the concerns about communication with the community and the burden, I I understand that I really fear, I'm very concerned about delaying generating revenue. I'm concerned about how, I mean, I understand that we don't know what will be cut because we haven't been presented the budget for this upcoming year yet. That will happen this spring. But I just, I don't want to approve another budget where we plan to be in the red again. I don't want to do that. And I don't want to cut significant staffing when we already have staffing issues, and I don't want to end up furloughing again. So I, it makes me very worried to delay even further because it seems like, I mean, I'm very new to helping the city level, but it seems like everything takes a long time. And so delaying makes me nervous. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Allison?
Hello, good evening, everyone. So I am with Meredith on the option three and the 3.5 million. I also want to ask, I did a little, you know, calculation on the 18 months from November with the fire district. And if I'm reading that right, that brings us to August of 2024, in which case we'll incur three more deficits, if I'm right, of over 2 million. So my question is, where's that going to come from? You know, is that coming out of reserves? I'm also, I mean, I'm asking, where's it going to come from? And I'm also not really in favor of adding three more years to deferred maintenance, so I already think that's rather irresponsible. Some of the things need fixing, and I don't want to put that off till 2024. Even though I'm old, I'd like to plan for people who are younger to enjoy this city. So generally speaking, I would be in favor of moving ahead rather than waiting until the fire district is resolved personally. So if anyone could answer my question about where the deficits will be drawn from, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I could give that a try, but we've got some other folks in the queue for questions. Let's go ahead and get questions and comments before we use too much of our brief time answering questions.
Okay, Sal, you had your hand up, and if you have something you'd like to comment on, I'd like to go to you before Kelly, because Kelly's already been able to share some of her initial thoughts. So Sal, did you have some thoughts?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief. I am also sympathetic to the the item, the proposal three. I share the concerns about the impact on ratepayers. I hope that we can come up with a strategy that will reduce that for folks on the who are struggling in the current economy. But at the same time, we need to make decisions about our current service level budget. We've made decisions to increase wages and benefits and increase significantly the staffing that we have for fire and other covered units. So I think it would be irresponsible for us to not come up with the revenue to pay for the staffing levels that we have attempted to create. I agree that we can't rely on the fire district to pass and, you know, another two years plus seems like too long to wait for revenue to solve this shortfall. I would be interested, as we kind of go forward with the budgeting, to see what a current service level budget looks like overall in terms of the expected cost increase with a little more granularity. But aside from that, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I listen to everybody, I please understand, I am not saying, let's just wait and do the fire district and then spend another three or four months trying to put together this other thing. I think we need to be looking at all of it right now. I am concerned, we've done absolutely no polling to this point in time on the fire district or the city service fee. And I know preliminarily that it's probably a little bit early on the on the service fee for the city. But the fire districting, I understand, is still a month out, and I would really like to see that. I mean, we're making some really profound decisions with very little buy-in from the public at this point in time. In addition to that, as I look at everybody here, and I know you're all hard chargers and all that, but I'd like to see a show of hands. When we get down to this, are you going to be out there selling this to the public? Are you going to be publicly speaking about it? Are you willing to join in a pack and put your all into it? Because that is what is required of you at this point in time. If you are, if we are going to do any of these things. And I just, I don't think everybody understands it. I remember with the transportation bond, there were maybe three of us, so we're very heavily involved. And I think there should needs to be everybody on this board tonight. So that's what I'm saying. That's my concern. I want to see buy-in from the public. I want them to understand. And I want to see older people like myself and younger people like Meredith. I want to see everybody out there doing their thing. So I mean, is it too much to ask to see a show of hands? I just want you to realize what is involved here. That's what I've got to say. And then my feeling is, I don't see how we're going to get the city fee to go much before the fire district. So I don't, you know, my feeling is, we put up the fire district and it doesn't go, we immediately go forward with the city fee. In the meantime, we can be still getting polling and talking this up. I talk to everybody I meet these days. I want them to understand what we are looking at and why we're looking at it. And I hope you are doing the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kelly. Now, we just have, we have eight minutes left. Council President, I saw your hand up. Remy, if you'd like to weigh in, I know your voice is not as strong as it normally is, but I'll call on you. And then if we have time, then go back to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a literal Zach. I saw your reaction. Hopefully, my non-existent voice can still carry its message. I have some concerns regarding implementation. Like Counselor Gary, I also went back and watched the McManville Water and Light Commission meeting and as part of this process. And I had a number of concerns that came up regarding the implementation process. I actually feel as though I'm kind of hearing the same thing from a lot of counselors, just with a slightly different, it's the same painting with a slightly different brush stroke. And so I encourage us to keep moving forward with clear direction to council tonight. Or clear direction from council, rather. And I'm generally supportive of option three, although I support that without a great love of the city service fee as well. I see it as a means to an end, and I am hopeful that we'll continue to find other ways of generating revenue. And part of that has to do with my concern regarding implementation and the cost of implementation to the city and the ability to really deliver the equity that we are hoping to be able to deliver with our policies as we move forward. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Adam.
Yeah, a question for Jennifer. In your presentation, for some reason, I thought we could get to $3 million to fill the gap without a city services fee, but in the packet, I don't see that as one of the options. They kind of all call out as some mix of city service fee. So just some clarification on that. And then the second thing was just to speak to, you know, the current read of the room with the taxpayer is, you know, they've spent the last two years in in their eye, in some form or fashion, paying taxes and not getting full services, whether that's, you know, pools are closed or splash pads aren't operating or city halls not open, or the community development counter is not open. And those were all pivots we had to do for COVID, and that's not a, not a knock on staff by any, any, anything at all. It's just the reality of the perception of what the taxpayer that we're going to be going to for a fire district or for a MAC PAC or the blowback we're going to get from a city services fee when they already feel they haven't been getting full value for their tax dollars they're currently paying needs to be taken into context of implementing the city service fee in front of an initial fire district vote. You know, if we give them a year runtime of a splash pad that opens on time and now city halls open and community development's opening next month, and they can actually interface with city staff and feel that great service level that our staff provides. I personally feel we're going to be leaps and bounds ahead in the success of all three of these things rolling out one at a time versus trying to cram it down the taxpayers' throat. So it'd be my goal to close the gap, have a deficit-free budget without implementing a city services fee. And that would be the direction that I would give staff if we were voting right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Chris, we've got four minutes.
I'll be super brief. I'm, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna tag on to what, excuse me, got a frog in my throat, what Counselor Menke said a little bit. I do think it's very important that if we're going to move forward with this proposal, that we need to have some sort of direct communication with with our constituents and not just with the residents, but also with the business community. And, you know, they sent a series of of questions to us. I don't know if they've been responded to. At least the chamber did, but MEVLC would be another group to bring this to and express what's going on, as well as MEDP and MDA. I think, I think if we don't bring it into those organizations and have conversations with them, being frank with them about where we're at, then all we're doing is, we're coming across like we're shoving something down their throats. And I don't think that's going to play well. So just wanted to tag that on.
Thank you, Chris. Well, our time is well spent. I'm just going to go to Jeff. We got a lot of directions. Where do we sit from a staff perspective and the next steps?
So we'll do some staff work based on what we heard from the group tonight. There were some questions asked that we weren't able to answer during time, and we'll do our best to provide an answer to several of those, too. So more information to come. I think the general consensus we heard was that you'd like to see the possibility either increase or establishing franchise fees to try to close the gap for the current year's budget, for us to continue to work on an implementation schedule for the city services fee that would likely be after vote on the fire district and will continue to build our budget based on based on those. I mean, you give us some guidance in terms of some dollars and which methodology you like. So we'll bring that back, probably in a series of either tentative or planned actions for the council or the next few council meetings. And we can provide some answers to some of the questions that we heard in writing to the whole Budget Committee and council afterwards as well.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd like to thank those members of the Budget Committee that are with us tonight for your heavy lift and your involvement in this process and council. Again, it's always good to be together with the Budget Committee as we're going through these very complex discussions that are going to lead us to being able to balance our budget and grow the way that we all want to and our citizens. With that being said, Claudia, do we go to another Zoom session or does this one continue on?
Mayor, we go to a different Zoom link.
Okay, we will, I will adjourn the joint work session this evening at 6:58. Your Zoom direction is in your calendar. So thank you, everyone.
Counsel Garvin. Counsel Gary. Counsel Gary.
Claudia, you seem to be muted.
Counsel Garvin. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Counsel Gary.
Aye.
Counsel Menke.
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Present and in person.
Counsel Peralta.
Here.
Counsel President Drabkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you. We'll give Claudia a moment to go over. I'll go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. I'll let her get the flag up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. This evening, I have a proclamation. And this proclamation is on Child Prevention Month. And so whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18, and annually over tens of thousands of Oregon children, 78,632 in 2020 are reported to the Department of Human Services as having been abused or neglected, with 11,642 children, child abuse victims confirmed in 2020 alone. Although many cases go unreported, and it was especially true during the COVID-19 pandemic, when many children were isolated and away from the eye of mandatory reporters. Whereas the physical, emotional, mental, and financial impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, social backgrounds. And these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention efforts succeeded because of partnerships creating, created among states and local government agencies, schools, the faith community, civic and community organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business communities, while recognizing that feeling connected to community can only be, can be a protective factor against child abuse. And whereas McMinnville is dedicated to stopping child abuse, supporting survivors and their non-offending families while working to prevent it, whereas each of us have a role to play in stopping the problem of child abuse as part of the solution by learning how to prevent, recognize, and report child abuse and supporting prevention, education, and empowerment programs for children and for youth. Now therefore, I, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In witness thereof, I have therefore set my hand to cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this, the 22nd day of March 2022. Reaffirm, we reaffirm McMinnville, Oregon's commitment to creating a safer, healthier, more thriving community for our children and taking steps to help prevent child abuse through awareness efforts, prevention promotion, and trainings on responding responsibly. We encourage all citizens to wear blue every Friday in April. That would be the first, the eighth, the 15th, the 22nd, and the 29th, as a public statement in McMinnville in support of child abuse prevention. Further, we call upon all citizens to invest in the lives of children by learning what we can do to help stop child abuse through the Juliet's House, a community resource, by visiting www.julietshouse.org. Signed, Mayor Scott A. Hill.
Mayor and council, we also have President and CEO of Juliet's House, Mark Russell, or Russell Mark, here to talk.
And Russell, it's good to have you and recognize the great work. Go ahead and address the council.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'll take just a moment predominantly to say thank you. This is my coming up on sixth anniversary with Juliet's House, the sixth time I have come before this council and asked for your support in this proclamation. Many people think proclamations don't necessarily mean a great deal, but for us it does because it is that stamp of affirmation that says this community in this county does not want child abuse to continue. We are grateful for that support. I know many of you personally and your work that you do in community with children, and we are incredibly grateful for it. Throughout April, it's National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We will have many activities for McMinnville and throughout the county. We're promoting, we're building this year's campaign around three primary points. Get trained, have the hotline number handy, and commit to doing at least one thing to support a child and families, particularly young families that are at risk. This last year, or in 2020, in Yamhill County alone, ODHS reported over 1,000 cases of child abuse and neglect in our county that were credible to the point of requiring an official investigation. Over a third of those needed the services of Juliet's House to work with the child and with their non-offending family members. There's so much more we can do if more and more of our citizens are informed and educated into what to do and how to identify what abuse looks like and how to respond to it appropriately. I have the great fortune on April 20th of leading our council, our city council, in our stewards of children training for adults. So I'm looking forward to seeing each one of you at that training. I'm hoping it'll be in person if we're to that point. Otherwise, we'll have a good time learning more on Zoom or whatever platform we use. But the whole idea is with training, with outreach, the work that we're doing in schools makes such a huge difference. And of course, having the hotline ready and handy at 855-503-7233. We encourage everyone to have it on their cell phones and ready to go. As the proclamation ended by saying, there's so much information on our website, many activities, ways that you can become involved. We're particularly happy that every Friday, we're calling Wear Blue Day. Blue is the official color of child abuse prevention. So Wear Blue Day, any day, any Friday of that month. Also, on April 22nd, we have Wheels and Pinwheels Motorcycle Ride, winding all throughout Yamhill County. And there'll be opportunities for people to stand by the road with signage and cheers and cheering on the motorcycle riders. Last year, we had over 100 riders, and it was very impressive. Also, on April 29th, ending up the month, is our Celebrate the Children Auction, which will be virtual this year. It's a great time to celebrate the work that's being done in this community, the powerful resilience and value that our children have, and to celebrate what this community has committed itself to protecting children. We are also particularly grateful that the city has allowed us to put pinwheels on city property and to build awareness and visibility. I know Chief Scales is a big supporter, as is our fire department and other city agencies that also are very supportive. So thank you for your commitment. And as a citizen of McMinnville, I'm very grateful for the work that you do quite personally. So thank you.
Russell, again, thank you. I've been associated with the Juliet's House for many years, and especially in my term as mayor. And I take my hat off to you for the great work that you've done, especially during the COVID time, when it's been very difficult. We are going to be meeting in person, so our training hopefully will be taken by each of our counselors in person as we're coming back into council chambers in April. So again, share with your staff, share with your volunteers how much we appreciate all that's being done.
I will. I believe Chris had a question.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question. Well, I do have a question. First, I have a comment. Thank you for all that you do. And my question is, how do I get pinwheels?
Call our office.
Okay.
If you know Diane Longacre.
I do know Diane.
Diane@Juliet'sHouse.org.
Okay.
Thank you for that question, Chris. Russell, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Our next item of business this evening is comments from community members. And anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Announce your comments. Your comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Please raise your hand in the Zoom function if you'd like to speak or get ahold of Claudia. And with that being said, Claudia, do we have anyone scheduled for comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have Mark Davis here.
Welcome, Mark.
Set up here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Counselor Chenoweth, in person. This is the first time I've been here in about two years. When I heard you were opening up again, I thought, well, I got to come back and talk. Couple things on my mind this evening. One is the Three Mile Lane area plan. It's scheduled for a hearing. It's a legislative matter, not quasi-judicial, so I believe I can mention it. And I'd like to encourage the council to call for your own hearing so you can hear from the public. There was a pretty good discussion, I think, in front of the Planning Commission, and I think there were some important issues raised that the city council ought to hear. The other issue I'd like to address is the work session discussion you just had on raising fees. In a general sort of way, I'm supportive of that effort. I mean, it's been very clear for several years that we've got a gap in our budget, and there's a struggle there to get things to balance and provide the services we need. However, I am, you know, I have 25 years of history of objecting to the regressive nature of the rates in this community. I've both spoken to the city council and Water and Light about the amount that is charged directly to the customer without regard to consumption. And this fee, it appears to me, there's just another addition to the fee that's charged to people regardless of whether they use any electricity or any water or dump anything down their sewer. And I just think that we're headed in the wrong direction, especially if we're trying to be concerned about equity and, you know, not overcharging people. So, you know, I would like to see there be a public hearing. I saw that you've got, you know, ordinances, you've got resolutions, but nowhere along the way have I heard is, are you interested in what the community thinks? You hold these work sessions where the community isn't allowed to make comments. So I, you know, by the time, I realize there's a budget hearing, but by the time it gets to the budget hearing, quite frankly, I think the ship has left the dock, so to speak. And the idea that you're suddenly going to change directions and redo the budget at the end of May or whenever that hearing is, I think is very unrealistic. So I think you ought to hold a public hearing and invite public comment and, you know, try to figure out some sort of plan that will get all of us on board, supporting, you know, the direction we're heading. Because I'm supportive of the general direction. I'm just concerned about the fee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Claudia, any other citizen interested in addressing the council?
Mayor and Council, we do not.
Thank you, Claudia. That's going to take us to advice and information items this evening. And so I will go to members of the council. I'll start at the top. I've got Kelly first and then Zach up next.
I don't have a great deal to report this week. In fact, frankly, I don't have anything. Hopefully, I will hear from YCAP next week, and so I'll have some information for the first meeting next month. But that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Zach with Sal up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same for me. My committee assignments are top-heavy in the month, and so I'm light-heavy in the bottom. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Sal, and then we will go to Council President Drabkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one brief report. The council of governments had our first board meeting of the year post, you know, the election of new officers. We agreed, you know, much like the City of McMinnville, council of governments bases fees on the index from Seattle, the price index from Seattle, CPI, that's what I was looking for, CPI from Seattle. The CPI increased 6.9%. However, this year, the COG decoupled the fees that we charge to our cities and counties and municipal partners from that CPI and instead are charging a 4% increase to help reduce the, you know, the cost of services. And we will absorb that internally and through trying to basically increase services in the current calendar year. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Remy, and then we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Affordable Housing meeting is canceled for tomorrow. However, we did have a very wonderful, open, frank conversation with Portland Home Builders as part of our preparation for bringing construction excise tax recommendations to the council as a whole. And then Visit McMinnville Board Meeting is scheduled for the 30th of this month with an additional strategic planning meeting happening on the 29th, for those that can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Chris, and then we'll get Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Remy, I hope you get to feeling better. I don't have anything to give to report. My meetings were just before the last city council meeting and tomorrow. So I'll be giving reports on the next meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. YCOM, we haven't met yet since our last council meeting. Airport Commission, we haven't met either, but we should see something on our next council agenda in relation to the airport. And then fire district stuff. We had our draft polling questions revised here on Monday. We should have those back to us Wednesday evening, Thursday morning, and then we're going to have another meeting on Monday in relation to refining those some more. We made a lot of progress in our first refinement meeting on Monday. So it'd be my hope we could probably get our polling questions wrapped up either this coming Monday or the following Monday, if we keep meeting weekly until they're ready to go out to constituents. So that's where we're at with fire district polling at the moment.
Thank you, Adam. Much like you, many of my meetings were canceled. And, but I did have a Yamhill Bypass Committee meeting last Thursday. Our ODOT consultant, Andrew, is out on military leave for the next month and a half. And so Anna came in and updated us on the project status of Phase 2A, which is the intersection at 219, 2B, which would be from 219 up to Rex. at 219, 2B, which would be from 219 up to Rexhill, and 3A, which is from Dundee to Dayton. And so we were updated on all of those thing, on all of those items. We talked a little bit about local funding, and, and we've been talking a, a bit to the council of re, our, our outstanding balance on Phase 1 of refinancing that with the Oregon Fund, the Oregon Transportation Funding Bank. And we, we're talking with that. Dave Holgberg and Brent Baker are meeting with mayors and city managers. Jeff and I met with them on Monday, getting into much more detail of what that would look like. And we are going to be coming before the council in April, just to give you the details of not taking any additional cash flow away from the city, but extending the funding opportunities to get us with Phase, the two Phase 2s and Phase 3, one ask to the cities to complete the project. So, more coming up from that perspective. And I think in our first meeting in April, Dave will be in front of us again, and then we'll probably have a sub sequential meeting, the second opportunity of council meeting in April. With that being said, I'm going to, Amanda, we'll call on you as department heads.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to give you a heads up that likely in, hopefully in April, we'll be bringing forward some ordinances for some telecom, telecommunication franchise agreements for Zipley Fiber and AT&amp;T. Zipley Fibers has expired, so they're looking to renew theirs, and AT&amp;T will be a new one. And then also, next week, I will be working remotely, but I'll be traveling with my husband as he goes to attend a conference. So, I will be available, but I will not be in the state for Tuesday through, well, Wednesday through Friday.
Thank you, Amanda. Let's go to Chief Scales, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Just a quick update. I refer you back to my emails that I've sent out about some staffing, departures, and people were onboarding. We're continuing to work hard, command staff and line staff to get people in the door and get interviewed. So, we did hire somebody last week. We have a couple laterals or a lateral offer out, at least a conditional. And then we continue to work through the recruit process. And as a sidebar, soonest we can get people into the academy right now is September. So, there's a delay. We will probably do some sort of a pre-academy with our recruits, those that don't have any experience. Secondly, I had mentioned in my Monday email that the, with respect to some of the homeless encampments, the prohibited camping highlights I give you weekly, I failed to, to discuss the piece about some discussions that we're having with the private party regarding at least having the ability to house RVs that have been stored for upwards of 30 days. We continue to have conversations with that citizen and will work in the coming weeks and day, months, I would imagine, to sort of come up with a resolution, hopefully to get the issues resolved and the RVs off the street when they should be off the street. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's move over to Scott Burke. And again, thank you, Scott, for all of your efforts of, of getting the hybrid system up and going. I know you've got some other things coming a little later, but thank you for your work. And it looks like it's working very well this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. That's exactly what I was gonna say. Thanks for participating in our first hybrid in-person meeting. And just to point out that it was, I think, the first project the city did that was funded with the ARPA project dollars that the council allocated. And if you have any feedback for people in person or on the call, feel free to email me, and we'll keep getting it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, everyone. So, to report, I have a new staffer on board who is returning to McMinnville after being gone for about a decade, Crystal Woolbridge. She's, she's been a great addition, and she's been really just jumping in with two feet the last two, three weeks that she's been on board. I also have just really great news about the ARPA position that we've had posted for a number of months. I was despairing that we would ever be able to find someone to, to take that role. And we had a really nice group of candidates a couple weeks back, and we have made a conditional offer to one woman who we hope all of the due diligence will allow us to bring her on board later in April. So, that will be super awesome. And then I just want to mention that we are looking at moving our, right now, city credit cards, employee credit cards are actually a credit card instrument, and we're looking to move to a more commonly used purchasing card system. And so, that contract will likely be before you about a month from now, but I'm thinking of putting it on the consent agenda. So, just wanted to let folks know that we've been, had, had this in the works for a few months, and we'll be bringing that forward soon. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Jennifer. Let's go to Anne.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything new to report this evening.
Okay. Let's go to Susan.
Hello, Mayor and councilors. Just quickly, we are so happy to be welcoming all of our patrons into our buildings, either with or without masks. And also, one of the last return to normal activities we'll be doing is at the senior center. It has been open for the mornings since August of 2021, and we will be reopening in the afternoons on April 11th. So, we're, we're excited to be expanding those hours back to normal. That's it. Thank you.
Heather?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. A couple things to report. We, the Planning Commission moved the, the residential design and development standard package, our response to House Bill 2001, through them at their last meeting and have already voted to make a recommendation to you. And so they were, are able to get that done in a fairly efficient manner, and we're gonna be bringing that to you on April 26th. On April 26th, we also have scheduled a public hearing for our proactive rental inspection program, as well as the construction excise tax program based on your direction that you've given to us previously when we brought that to you for presentation. So, I wanted to let everyone know that the Three Mile Lane area plan that Mark had brought up in his comments is currently tentative, tentatively scheduled for city council adjournment on May 10th, because the amount of items that are coming in on April 26th. Also, wanted to let you know that we will be opening the Community Development Center on April 18th. The reason we are waiting till April 18th is we're actually filling our front counter permit person's position. We haven't had that position for about two years now. When we closed the building, that was one of the reductions that we made within our teams. But we are offering 100% service delivery for people who want to meet by appointment or electronically as well. We've been doing that throughout the COVID event. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Debbie, are you representing the Fire Department, Chief Lippert?
I wasn't planning to, but I thought he was on. Is he not on?
Rich, are you on? I don't see you unless you're the phone call.
Um, well, I can give a little update, I guess. We're kind of moving status quo towards the consolidation, we're moving towards a district dean, as Adam kind of talked about earlier. We met and we're meeting with, trying to get the polling out and trying to push that forward. Tomorrow, we're having a small hiring process for the Firefire paramedic position, which we have openings. And then April 20th, we are scheduling an EMT hiring process. We have, we'll be doing a list off of that one. We have at least one EMT open at this point. And then we're just gonna keep moving forward, trying to fill those positions that we have for reopen.
Thank you, Debbie, for that report. And then Jeff, if you'd like to report out, and then we'll move over to the Third Street Improvement Project after you do your report. You're muted.
Yes, I am. I've never done a Zoom from St. Louis before, so that's, that's my excuse. So, this, so the, the topic on Third Street is actually my only report item, so I'll just launch right into that.
Go ahead.
The executive team met earlier, and would like to recommend that the city submit the Third Street Improvement Project for congressionally-directed spending, Senate and community project funding representatives. The request would be for $8 million for 10 blocks of infrastructure improvements on like, on McMinnville's iconic Third Street. Infrastructure improvements include water, wastewater, stormwater, streets and sidewalks. City is currently underway with design, anticipates using, being finished with a 30% design construction document by the end of the calendar year. These appropriations are for the federal FY23 budget. Applications are due on April 1st. Staff will be reaching out for, let us support from partner agencies, and would like to encourage city leadership to promote the project in any of their discussions with our federal delegation. And we would ask for a motion from the council to authorize this proposal for the Third Street Improvement Project for congressionally-directed spending. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, any questions, Jeff, before we ask for a motion? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Councilor Hury has his hand raised.
Sorry, Zach.
You know, I think it's about time I change it back to the Simpsons yellow. I'm gonna, I'm gonna acquiesce. You win. Okay. The question I'm, I know that there was a, the launch of the re-effort, relaunch of the effort to get that project underway or to finalize that project. Is that, duh? Is that, is it to a stopping point? Is it, does it have a collated, finished product to what we set it down in the recent, recent memory? I mean, I, I know I see the packets, and I'm, I'm reading along as those packets come out. Have we got to a point? Do we need to get to a certain point before we ask for more money? Where is that at and why? Why now?
So, I'm gonna give you the high-level version, then I'll ask Heather to give you some more detail and correct whatever mistakes I make. We have been meeting with the project advisory committee on this project. We've got, I think, at least two more meetings scheduled here in the next few weeks. We have, we have that group's consensus on the design concept, and we're working with the design firm to move towards a 30% design. So, we don't have the product yet that we would, that we would need, but we are making the progress that we think is necessary. And so we think it's timely to include this as a congressionally-delegated spending project application. And so, let me turn it over to Heather for a little bit more detail.
Yeah, so we, we are in design development right now. We are currently just finishing up our concept designs, and we'll be doing schematic, kicking off schematic designs in a month's time. Last night, I sent out an email with a, a series of different calendar and events on it. I'm hoping city council got that. I'm getting responses from many of you right now. But the PAC has several meetings coming up to get through concept and schematic design. We will be having two community forums, one at the end of concept design. That community forum is, is scheduled, tentatively is scheduled for May 3rd, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And then we'll be doing online public information sessions as well. And then we'll do schematic design community forum, too. We're gonna go out for an RFP for the engineering, for the construction documents, to get the 30% construction documents. Probably sometime towards the end of May, early June. We're coordinating that with our current architectural team that's working on design development. And then, then we'll be surveying all 10 blocks, and we'll be putting together the actual construction documents. We expect to have those done at 30% level by December 31, 2022. That is, is, that is within the realm of what the congressionally-dedicated spending, AKA earmarks, is looking for in terms of a project that's ready to proceed.
Okay. Council President Grabkin?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I, I believe the, this application, it's due April 1st, correct? And in terms of timing and understanding why we would be submitting this right now? Or is this the same? Yeah, it's due April 1st.
Yeah, it's due April 1st to the, to our federal delegation. It will be part, it will be submitted to be part of, for chosen, to be part of the fiscal year '23 federal budget, which starts October of this year. Typically doesn't actually get authorized until sometime in December, and then runs through all of next year. So, the funding distributed through that.
Thank you. I, I just thought that date was important for understanding why we needed a resolution tonight. And then the other thing, those earmarks anymore.
You cut out, Remy.
No. But they are not called earmarks anymore. They, they are called congressionally-dedicated spending for the Senate side and community project funds for the representative side.
Thank you for those questions, Remy. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know if this is where Zach was going with his question, but I'm kind of curious. We voted to fund the Third Street Improvement Development Plan. Is that what you were just speaking to, Heather's? Is that all the components of that? Or is that funding that we funded for ARPA something different? And if it's something different, have we completed that task?
No. So, what, what I was just describing was what was funded and is funded by ARPA that's underway right now and will conclude by the end of this calendar year. And we funded that for this very reason, to get into a competitive position for these types of federal opportunities.
Perfect. Thank you.
And if it's my understanding, we've always been looking for those opportunities. That's why we put so much effort into this. I know this coming Saturday, Senator Merkley is going to be doing a, his annual town hall with Yamhill and Polk County, and I have it on my agenda to bring it to his attention for support, Heather.
Yeah. They're highly competitive. They're getting lots of projects right now. They'll get many more than they'll be able to actually submit. But I think it's good for McMinnville to start getting this project in front of our federal delegation to raise awareness if we're not able to get funding through this particular funding resource, because there will be several others coming in the next six to 12 months.
Right. And it's the only way we're going to be able to get the project funded, because we don't have local dollars to do that. Okay. Any other questions on this topic?
Seems like a good project. I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to, to move this forward. I apologize for jumping the gun there on you a bit.
Good.
Second.
Second.
Okay. I've got Sal and I think it was Zach. Is that correct?
Remy.
It was my low voice because of.
Okay. I know it was Remy. Okay.
And I wish I had those baritone's right now.
So, I'm gonna ask all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The proposal for the Third Street Improvement Project for congressional dedicated spending passes unanimously 6 to 0. It is 7:39. I don't know that we have ever had a half an hour council meeting, but I am going to adjourn the council meeting at 7:39. Thank you, everybody, for being a part of this evening and for your good comments. Thanks, all. Have a great evening.